To reconvene the Board of County Commissioners' regular board meeting, we will open up the 505 certain public hearing on the budget, which will be approving and discussing adopting the final levy of the ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 2022-2023, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2022-2023, and also approving the five-year capital improvement plan. So at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. And individuals wishing to make public comment could come forward. This portion is designed to allow citizens to bring matters to the board. It's not expected that the board will get into debate or deliberation on matters, which we did have prior information. So please limit your comments to three minutes. We'd like for you to fill out a comment card. It's not necessary if you don't have to, but if you did, give them to Ms. Ashley over to your right and my left. So I'll ask for the first public comment. Come forward if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Tim Hotelling, 105 River Sideways, San Mateo. It's not so much as a comment. Well, it's a comment and a request because the stuff that made it into the newspaper talked about 10%, 20% increase in taxes. And I know there's some legitimate reasons for them. And you had conversations about employee salaries and lots of other things. And I was wondering if you could, in the image of public comment, just give a little bit of an overview as to what changes have occurred that are causing these increases. I'm sure it's logical, but it'd be nice to know.
Okay. Ms. Julianne, can you address some of those you think is kind of...
Yes, sir. I can do my best to give you a brief recap. Please remember that the millage rate is remaining the same or constant. So there is no increase in the tax millage rate. What you are seeing is the property appraiser has appraised assessment values to grow in some instances. And you are also seeing the addition to some properties being taxed by adding to the tax rule, i.e. via new development. So you're seeing either commercial properties that have been revamped to now have a greater tax appraised value, and/or you're seeing new housing developments that may have a greater housing tax value. What we saw across the board in property tax values was about a 10.5% increase in tax value in properties. The millage rate remained constant. What we did see due to the cost of goods across the board is an increased need in every constitutional office, to the tune of the constitutional offices at this point are drawing about $33 million of our ad valorem tax revenue, which is about $48 million as of this fiscal year. We also saw increased needs in operational expenses, fuel, goods of services, your operational medical supplies, anything related to the same inflationary practices that you're seeing across the board also have hit county governments who service citizens. The additional need at the BOCC level, we did prioritize trying to make an impact on our staff's wages. We did follow suit with the state in a 5.38%. But also of most notable significance hit to the budget was that we moved the minimum starting wage from 10 to 13 an hour. Those were, in essence, where the cost went to the additional revenue generated by the increase in property values, not an increase in taxing.
Okay.
Just as a footnote, and the information that was published in the Palaca newspaper, it suggested that you were increasing the way I read it anyhow, the per capita ad valorem, whatever you want to say, beyond...
Ad valorem, yeah.
...the increase in valuation from Tim Smith and...
Tim Parker. Tim Parker.
I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tim.
I got something more.
Commissioner Rawls?
Tim, the long and the short of it is, you will be paying more taxes. Your taxes did go up. So no matter how you parse the words, we have two choices. We can reduce the millage rate, which would reduce your overall tax, or we can leave it the same, which would increase your tax. So...
My point was, I understand that, and I applaud that. I'm waiting to hear about the implementation of the fire service so that Commissioner Turner and my insurance rates can go down. I haven't heard anything about that. I'll be thrilled to hear that. But I understand advocate it. My only point being is that the general public, the only thing they hear is, you're getting into our pockets, and you didn't say why. And I think it'd be good to say why.
I don't think you're going to see an increase in services. I think in some cases, you'll see a decrease in services. But I think the problem is, is that the budget is extremely anemic to begin with. Again, we have an option to decrease the revenue, and that would allow us to lower the millage rate. We don't have a huge participation rate in the millage rate right now. That could be adjusted. A lot of things that can be done. But I wouldn't look for your property insurance to go down anytime soon, because just the cost of housing alone, that extra cost that we're paying right now is going to translate to higher insurance costs at the end of the day. So...
Personally, I feel that you should have just left it alone and had enough money to pay people decent. But in any event, y'all...
I agree.
It would be beneficial, I think, to everybody if you had a little bit more information out for the general public.
I agree. Commissioner Turner?
Okay. I think that it should be said that we emphasize the point that our tax rate has not gone up. I'll try if this thing doesn't start buzzing. Is that better? Okay? If I get too close to it, it goes crazy on me. Yeah, I'm hearing they quit working too, Tim. I got it. So I think it should be said at this point that our tax millage rate has not gone up. As a matter of fact, for the last two years, it's gone down. We can't control what Mr. Parker decides to evaluate or evaluate a house. I think that he looks at it every five years. But that's his job to evaluate properties. It's our job to set the tax rate. It could ideally be less, but it can't be this late in this cycle. And you can't do the things that you need to do, like give employees decent wages or what have you, unless you... And take the rollback, too. You just can't do it. The money doesn't work that way. Just not enough there. So I think that another thing is being lost here, too, that part of this increase in the ad valorem tax base is a complete broadening of the tax base. In other words, when Camarco came in and set up a $5 million or however many million-dollar operation they out, that raised taxes quite a bit. That's also included in this 10% increase in ad valorem revenues that we've received, and when our portion of the paper mill. I don't know, did the money that we give back to the paper mill for the first three years, two years or three years of that deal that was made on the additional taxes only that we wouldn't have got if they hadn't have brought the machine in here, do we count the whole in our revenues, do we count the whole thing as part of our revenues and tax increase, even though we have to give them the money back as an expense later on? So that's also part of the 10%.
We have to. Yes, absolutely.
So that's like $4 million of this money that we got.
Plus, $4 million plus. It's about 4.3.
About $4.3 million of the extra money we have. We've got to write a check back to GP for the first three years of Project Purple, because that's the additional taxes that they'll pay. But after the first three years...
Five years total.
Well, we...
You go 95. You're right.
After the first three, we get 20% of the money. And then after the five years, we get all the tax revenues. But that's what had to be done to get them to come to town for that $5 million in additional taxes. So $4.3 million of this tax increase, we've got to write a check for 95% of that money back to George Pacific as an expense during this year, that that doesn't show in this situation. Well, it's the same. So this isn't just increase in people's housing and what have you. There are some people that went up, because obviously, housing costs are going up. But it's only going, I think I was told that the property appraiser's office only really looks at that every three to five years on most houses, is what I was told. And so a lot of this money, the increase in money was broadening of the tax base, not just increase in residential housing costs. It's just the way it is, I believe. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, that?
Somehow I got the bad microphone now. By increasing tax base, you mean starting three years ago? Because that didn't increase from last year to this year. That's a depreciated asset for GP. So that part actually decreased.
It increased.
How would it appreciate when it's a depreciable asset?
Well, the property appraiser goes out and values the Quattro plant itself, which includes both their tangible and intangible assets. So yes, we did get an increase in that Quattro plant valuation this year as well.
As they grow, yeah.
Okay. That's good news. That's neither here nor there. I mean, the issue is, if the ad valorem stays the same, you're paying more tax. And I don't think this is a good time in our community, in this country, in the county, in the state, to increase taxes on anyone. There is room in reserves to give some back, maybe not all of it. But we definitely could have found a way to get somewhere between where we are now and where we're going. So...
Commissioner Turner?
I want to just say that I'm on board with you. But we can't do it at the end of the process. I think that in the portion of this year, when we made, at the first of this process this year, we made the decision that we were going to raise the minimum wage rate in Putnam County to $13 an hour and give 5.38% pay raises, because that's what the state gave. And so if we made, that's our benchmark that we set back in June. Now, I'm okay. If we start in June, and our first meeting in the budget process, when we start getting projected revenues, is at that point saying, okay, we're going to cut X amount of millage rate out this year. And we start that upfront in the budget process, then I'll be on board with you, because then we budget around the money that we have. But if we try to give millage rate back in this meeting, for instance, then the only way that we can give it back, because we've already granted the constitutional officers their budget request, and so we'll be taking the whole hit on the Board of County Commissioners' side, which means the only way we can cut money is either fire people, don't pay the $13 an hour minimum that we promised, or cut the fire and emergency services budget by 30 to 35%. None of those are something that I'm willing to vote on. If we want to do that for next year, buddy, I'll be on board with you. Because, and I'm hoping that next week, that we'll probably be able to maybe give a little millage back again. I just don't know until the final numbers come in for the year. But I'm hoping there's some there. But there's a process that we've got to go through, and it can't start by saying, we're going to increase the budget expenses by $1 million, and then we're going to cut revenues by $2 million. We can't do that. We've got to start out and say, okay, the money we're going to use the budget from this year is going to be so many percent millage points less than what it is right now. And that's where you start. That's where you start, because then you know how much money that you've got to budget with. That's just, you just can't do it in this late in the game. But I'm on board with you as far as trying to get a millage cut next year. But we need to start it upfront. That way the constitutionals get their cut. Everybody gets their, everybody gets their cut, and not just the Board of County Commissioners taking it on the chin for the whole millage rate reduction, whatever that is. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, that?
This commissioner believes that we have more than enough in reserves to cover a millage decrease. We don't need to carry $14.9 million in reserves. We're required to carry around $6 million. And if we do GFOA, $10 million, so we could at least split the difference and give back at least a few million dollars and help not impact the citizens as much. Me personally, I love the idea. Let's start planning, do a full rollback for next year. So how do we start that conversation in next month? Let's start doing it all year this year and get it done. I was trying to start that conversation earlier in the year, I guess. I didn't do a good enough job of explaining that is what my goal was. But I'm glad that you're on board for this year, for us to get there. And I just don't see myself voting yes for this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Rawls?
What's never been discussed since I've been elected is the possibility of alternative funding sources for the county. We keep coming back to the millage. We keep complaining that there, you know, there's, it's all based on the values of housing. Not if, but when the house values start to adjust and adjust down, then you'll be sitting at this dais, and I won't be here, thank God, saying, well, we have less money, because the revenue's going to drop. And then you're going to have to make a tough decision that could have been made years before that would include alternative funding sources. It doesn't matter what your house is worth. If you live in Putnam County, it's the right thing to do to pay for 911 dispatch, for police, fire, and rescue. I think everybody should bear those expenses equally and undiminished, because it doesn't matter, at the end of the day, whether you live in a house that's worth $100,000, or $1,000, or $1 million. When you need the service, you need the service. The rest of it can be figured out, and that would drive the millage rate down. And it would actually help the average individual right now that's paying taxes by paying less taxes, especially your business owners. But that conversation's never been had. Hopefully, you guys will take a look at that in the future. You spent $20 million in the past two years between ARPA and CARES Act money. Take that $20 million out of play, and take a look at where this budget really looks like. And that's one of the parts of the conversations this commission's never had as well. I think it's time that the commission gets totally honest with the public and let them know how dire this budget is, and how dire this county is without extra money. It's like you hope for an emergency. One thing the government will never do is let a good emergency go to waste. But at the same time, we can't hope for those emergencies. We can't hope that the liberals that are running this country right now, that keep pumping free money out or continue to do that, because all that free money will have a date certainly to go back to the federal government. And we're starting to feel that pinch now. The Dow is down again. Everybody's losing money, if you have any money in the markets. Me personally, I divested myself in January, knowing that this day was coming. But I think that we really need to take a look, a hard look, at funding the county differently. Times have changed. We're not the only county that would do it. If you take a look at the counties around us and take a look at the fees that they have, just one fee that you could throw out there would be a drainage fee. I live on a paved road off of a paved road. Why would I care if we had drainage? But the drainage problems that we're fixing encounter over these next couple of days, part of that is self-inflicted, because we don't have the money to really provide adequate drainage in some areas. But if we all chipped in a little bit, on a fee basis, that would be covered. Same thing with fire, same thing with rescue, and so on and so forth. But I, too, would not, I, again, will not be voting for this budget. I don't think that there was any thought or consideration given to it, really. I think it was just thrown out there. This is how we're going to do it. There you go. We didn't go through and meet with the department heads and look at their pains, their gains, and see what we could do to adjust each one, maybe cut services here, add services there. Every year, this county changes. Every year, the needs of the county change. But, you know, a month and a half from now, I won't matter anyway. So I definitely would not be voting in support of this. I think that this was an opportunity to, this year, be able to reduce a little bit, or get the employees to the $15 an hour minimum where everybody else is. I think we've just done a disservice to the employees. Thank you.
Commissioner Turner?
In order to make this budget work this year, we actually, the staff actually cut over $100,000 out of operating expenses on the BOCC side to make it work with the salary increases that we made them budget around. So there were some backwards. I'm not going to go for a full rollback, because we can't do it. And the reason that you can't get me on board with taking reserves and paying reoccurring expenses in them is that's just budgeting 101. You don't take reoccurring, you don't take reoccurring expenses and pay them out of one-time monies, because then what happens is, the first money that comes in next year, if any comes in next year, additional to the existing revenues that are in place, would be to go towards the money that you took and paid reoccurring expenses this year with. That's just budgeting 101. So that won't work. I mean, it's nice to say it on TV, but it's just completely inaccurate and can't work. You can't pay reoccurring expenses with one-time money. You can't do it. And so all we would be doing is spending the first money that came in next year up and above the existing tax revenue rate. That's all we would be doing. So, you know, I think that's all I have to say on this subject. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Adams, that?
So we had a Fed chairman last week that announced that his goal for the economy is to drive wages down. That's the federal government's goal right now. We can't drive wages down in Florida, because the people of Florida voted to drive wages up. So we have a whole country that's, our federal government is working against us for at least the next two years, in order to try to drive wages down, to try to increase the cost of money, to do all these things that's going to lower our housing. We have one potential point that we could lower millage, which is this year and probably next year. And then we're probably going to have to raise millage. But to raise millage in those cases, the trim notice will keep it net even on revenues, because you have room to raise. If you have a lower millage of 8.3 or 8.5 compared to 9.3 or 9.4, or whatever we end up going to, 9.309, you have room there if there is an emergency in lieu of reserves. So if you had an issue, which you did have to dip into reserves for the real reason you have reserves, which is an emergency, or to fund something that possibly is on a capital improvement plan like we have here today, you would be able to do that through millage if that occurred. The only point that I'm willing to raise millage for is, if we had a, if this hurricane comes through and does $20 million of damage, obviously, we're going to have to do something to remedy that. But we're so close to the peak, to the top of 10, that we really have no room. So what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to, and I said this last year, too, so this isn't new. This isn't something new that I've never said before. It's not something that's never been talked about here since I've been here. I've said it all along. What we need to do is get millaged down to a point where we're using millage along with our reserves to protect the community from possible disaster in a fiscally way where we're giving back as much as we can to the community. Because, again, you put money back in the community's hands, that money is taxed every time they make a transaction with that money. They make a transaction, they buy stuff through your company, you go and you use that money to buy other things. Eventually, that money comes right back into the government. So it takes seven transactions. It's proven of the same money to get the money back in the government. Yes, I do understand some of it goes to the federal government, but 14 transactions that all come back local. I just think that's in the best interest of our community. And I'm always going to feel that way. I mean, that's just who I am. So, thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
At the end of the day, there will be a day of reckoning. There will be a day where the citizens of Putnam County are going to figure out that we're not cutting $100,000 out of the budget from administration. What we did was, we cut services. I get complaints at least three times a week about planning and zoning and permitting. You got people that don't know what they're doing. You got new people up there all the time. We can't get permits out the door. I can't get planning and zoning to take a look at a PUD or sit down and talk to me about something. Not me personally, but people that are complaining. And then I take a look at the staff that we've cut. All we're doing is, it's a shell game. And I know you don't like to hear that, but we're just moving money around. And you're missing a lot of vital components right now. You don't have a public works director. You don't have a planning director. You don't have this director and that director. We've taken and shoved them all into one person, and then that person can't get everything done, because they're too busy doing a lot of different things. You know, you go through the budget, you got a SQG person. Who does our small quantity generator? Where does that money really go to? Do we have an SQG program? No, we don't. But we have it in the budget. We have money in there for an office of budget manager. Somebody's getting paid that money, but we don't really have an office of budget manager person. We have a person that fills that position, but they're also filling other positions. So at the end of the day, it will come crashing down. The public will figure it out that the reason that they're feeling the pains that they're feeling is because we're not fully funding all these positions. And now, you don't have any extra money, unless you go into reserves. And Commissioner Turner is 1,000% correct. You can't use reserve money to have your recurrent revenue expenditures like positions, like a general services director, a budget manager, whatever position you want to throw out there. As these people leave the positions, if the positions didn't get refilled, and you just gave somebody a pay raise and more money, take a look at, I mean, take a look at what we pay in... I mean, take a look at what we pay in retirement. Take a look at your executive positions and what it's really costing. Look at the way business was done four, five, six years ago. You might, you might find an opportunity there to be able to save some money. But again, this is not my battle to fight beyond today. I will not be voting for this budget as it stands. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
One last thing for us to consider going forward, whether, it's not going to probably have anything to do with today's vote. I think it's going to be three to two. But we do have to start looking forward. I think we dodged a big bullet with the census. I think coming in under 75,000, and the fact that we are going over $5 billion in assets in the county, is going to take us in 10 years out of that, I believe we're going to be out of the savings that we get, so to speak, from being, but what do we call it, Larry?
Payman Lou attack?
Yeah. And I fear that. I fear that because that's about when my kids are going to graduate school, and they're going to be looking for jobs, and they're going to be doing things. Then the other people in this audience I know have kids and are planning families and doing things, and people out there. If we, if we don't start planning to bring things in and to figure out a way, I mean, again, we've doubled the amount of, the budget's doubled what it was four or five years ago, which, that could be great, but I don't, I'm not getting the input from the citizens that we've doubled the budget, and I understand some things have gone up, but they haven't gone up 100% in four years, okay? Most inflation's gone up, it's 18.2%, if you take the worst-case indicator, since four years ago. So, we've doubled the budget. Citizens don't feel like they're getting anything more than they were getting four or five years ago. I think we are. I do think we are, Terry. The staff is doing a lot more. I do think that we're reacting better to roads and doing things better than even when I took office almost two years ago. I just think we got to look ahead. After this year, we really have to start planning to that 10-year mark, because we're not going to get those same tax monies back. It's not going to happen. There's no way we don't outgrow that. There's no way we don't get past 75,000 people. Our revenue, I don't believe that our commercial capital and our, our inventory of goods as far as 100,000 taxable entities, I only see that growing over the next 10 years. And it's going to put us in a tough spot in 10 years. And I highly doubt I'll still be a commissioner in 10 years, because I really don't believe in running more than two times. So, so this is something for us all that we need to really ponder on and pray about and think about as we look forward. Again, we all know I'm a no vote on this budget, so that there's no reason for me to really keep beating a dead horse. But looking forward, we have to really think about that, I think. I think that needs to be our priority is the 10-year plan. I said that the first month I was here, when you start working a three, five, 10-year plan from a budget perspective. I actually think the land development code does play into that a bit, because that actually allows us to plan for ways that we're going to be able to make our properties more valuable and maybe create more taxable entities. I do agree with Commissioner Rawls, and the fact that we do need to start looking at some tax revenues, some revenues that have nothing to do with ad valorem. We do need to separate from that a bit, only because you can't just always be on the whim of what's going to happen with the appraisals of everything. We need something a little more steady state. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
I'll quit beating the dead horse as well. If you just take a look at the, at the B O C C administrative salaries, we spend $665,000 on salaries and $108,000 on retirement. It's because the way everything's structured, and the way we label, label the folks that work for us. But you take a look at the increase across from 2019, 2020, all the way to now, there's one, one position that goes from 123,000 to 156,000. And this, this is at the worst possible time to be able to do those raises. And you're sticking it to the other employees that got nothing or very little. Moving somebody from $10 an hour to $13 an hour is a 30% increase in revenue. Moving somebody from 12 to 13 isn't. But at the end of the day, if, and I, I don't know what y'all's eating habits are. I was visiting my mom in the hospital last week, took my dad out to dinner in Gainesville with my wife and my son, and I, we were not at a posh restaurant, and it was $110 for the bill, not including tip. This is the new world that we live in. You know, I respectfully disagree with the White House if they think that we can in any way force wages down. That's not going to happen. But in, you know, in Putnam County, you take a look at, you, I would encourage the, each and every commissioner to break the budget down, take a look at it, start looking at who you're paying, what you're paying, and why you're paying it. And then maybe next year, you'll have a different look at, on how you want to spend your money. But I'll leave this alone.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. All right. Any other further public comment? Anybody wishing to make a public comment? Okay. Mr. Wade Alford?
Good evening. This body previously was working towards an ordinance of protection for veterans monuments. This body was previously working towards ordinance of protection for veterans monuments. And that's something that can affect your budget. Hope we don't go down that road. The wave of iconoclasm sweeping this country and in Europe has slowed, but it's still having ripple effects. And recently, there was a mayor in North Carolina who pushed up monuments to World War I, monuments to World War II, Confederate monuments. How did he not push it up? Put it on Facebook. Just decided that's what he was going to do. Facebook Live. I think it's time you guys get it together with this ordinance and get this done. Mr. Harvey signed an oath during the primary season, stated he will vote against the removal or relocation of our Confederate heroes monument. And if you don't know the 40-year history preceding the war between the states, you don't know enough history. This whole issue about slavery and racism, I'm tired of being called a racist. I'm tired of all that. Our right to form a new government, when the one that we have no longer serves us, is enshrined in the Constitution. I'm tired of people arguing over this, who don't know what iconoclasm is. And if you don't know what iconoclasm is, I'd be glad to explain it to you, or loan you a book, or give you a reference. It's image-breaking. It goes all the way back to the Muslim mayors, the B.C., Muslim and the Christian wars, the Reformation. This is a wave that always happens prior to revolution. It doesn't always result in revolution, but it always precedes a revolution. I'd really like to see you guys go ahead and do something about this before this commission's membership changes. Just say no. Just put it to bed. Get this over with. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Alford. Commissioner Rawls?
Mr. Alford? The ordinance has been written?
I'll make a motion right now to bring it back out. There's, I mean, there's really no reason why we shouldn't have it. The excuse that was used was, well, the state already has one, but it doesn't actually protect our locals. So, I personally stand in favor of it, and we're willing to vote it in right this second, if the rest of the commission wants to go along with it.
While I certainly appreciate this conversation, this has nothing to do with the budget whatsoever.
Well, we, maybe we can put this on a future workshop.
This needs to go back on a, on a future workshop, if you want to.
It can have an impact on your budget. An unfortunate impact on your budget. And you don't need to go there. You don't need to waste that money. The ordinance of protection that the government, the governor signed, is for criminal acts. We're looking for preserving what's there.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, Mike Selepi?
Tiny? Good afternoon. Mike Selepi, 358 East River Road, East Placa. My biggest thing is information. This budget meeting, for starters, was hard to find the information of when it was being held even, and that it was open to the public. And then the budget information that gets released to the public, you know, you guys are raising tax rates and all these other things, and, you know, maybe not you personally, but they are going up, and the information's just not there to support any of it. I mean, the public needs to know what's going on in this county, and it's very hard to find this information and even address this information.
Okay. Can we maybe put that on a workshop that even discuss that, where we can try to do a better job to get this information out? Because we had budget talks during our workshops at, what, once a quarter? Once a quarter, and then these have both been noticed.
Yes, sir. The first hearing was sent directly to each taxpayer on their trim notice, telling them when the hearing was. The second was published in accordance with D O R. Page five of the newspaper on Friday was all intended for the purpose of noticing the public about this hearing. The line item budgets and the budget presentation are both on the Board of County Commissioner websites. We can add any additional venue that the commission so direct staff as they think it would be another avenue that might help any of your constituents find information about the budget. Happy to add it for next year.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rawls?
Nighttime meetings and town hall meetings is an easy way to get that done.
Mr. Tim, you got another comment?
Tim Hoatling again, just a quick little footnote. I sent you all an email explaining how difficult it was for me to find out just when you all were going to be doing this. Noting that on the county commission calendar, this event right now is not there, was not there as of last night. So with all respect, I'm not so sure that it was fully and properly publicized, because I spent 45 minutes looking through the newspapers and the computer and everything, and I was unable to locate it. So, somebody that wasn't as diligent would even be worse.
Commissioner Adams?
There is a difference between legal, publicized. It was absolutely legally publicized in getting the word out to the people. There was some confusion caused, unfortunately, by the Placa Daily News, when they talked about upcoming meetings of government, and they said that, in the news, it said the 9:00 AM meeting, and then it said there'd be budget stuff. So there was a lot of people that assumed, and that wasn't something that the, I don't think the commission or anyone put that out. The paper was just trying to synopsize what was going to be in the meeting, and they just probably, whoever typed it, I don't know who wrote that article, probably just didn't note that in our agenda, it says 5:05 PM next to the budget item. So I think it was just an error on someone's part clerically. That's unfortunate, but I don't believe it had anything to do with the staff or the commission in this case. I do agree that we should have, I think we should maybe moving forward, when we have 5:05 meetings, maybe have a separate entry in our calendar for the public, that says 5:05 will be an extension of the 9:00 AM meeting, and this will be with regards to the budget or something like that. I think that absolutely makes sense. And we did that a couple of times, so I don't know why that stopped. It happened if we did it for, maybe that was a special meeting that was only 5:05, now that I think about it. But I think that is a remedy to that. I just wanted to verify, though, that it was not a mistake by staff. It was a little blurb on what was happening in the paper that made it sound like it was 9:00 AM.
Sorry, I am, I am trying to sit down. I make no inflections upon staff, whatever. All I'm saying is that I attempted to find the facts, because I knew that you were having this meeting, and the facts were very elusive, for whatever reason. And it'd behoove you all to do better, just like it'd behoove you all to explain to the public the critical elements of the necessary increases or decisions of your budget, Terry.
Commissioner Turner?
Well, as Mr. Adams mentioned, we don't control the content of the damn newspaper. We just don't do it. And so, and they're, they're human also. They make mistakes. I don't think they did this one on purpose. I don't. I think they were just explaining what was going on, and that there was a 5:05 meeting. But Tim, they sent you the ad in Friday's paper. I saw it in an email today where she showed, actually showed you the ad in the paper on Friday, a big ad, not a blurb, a big ad in the paper that said our budget meeting's at 5:05 today. So, I understand we, okay, so we send five of them out instead of one, and, and somebody that doesn't read the paper at all gets mad. We have tried. We've tried through this process. We really have. And I'm, can we do a better job? Of course. We always can do a better job, and we strive to do a better job. And the idea that Commissioner Adams Act just had was a brainstorm. When we have 5:05s on the workshop, then put the 5:05 on the, on the calendar with this as a continuation of the morning meeting. That, that's not a hard thing to do, and it would be very easy to do, and then everybody would be more clear. But unless those kind of ideas come out in these meetings, we can't, five of us can't sit around and talk about this stuff, except in one of these meetings. And so, you know, I think that's an excellent idea, and I think it's very doable. And, but we did try to get the information out. And I'm, and I'm not blaming the newspaper, I'm really not, because everybody's human and can make a small mistake. They can. And, and I don't think that they intentionally tried to mislead anybody. What they did was to say, we got a meeting on Thursday, on Tuesday, and then this is theoretically part of this morning's meeting. So, and I don't, I don't think they really tried to do wrong. I really don't in this case. And you know I'd call them out if I did.
And this is also the second hearing of this budget, which was also advertised. But we will do a better job next year getting it out in maybe some other avenues.
We even need to do that throughout the year, when we have 5:05 meetings that are an extension of the morning meeting, because by statute, they have to be at 5:05 or after. And so, we just need to make sure that every time we have one of them, that we actually put that 5:05 extension of the morning meeting on the calendar, and then that'll just type it out.
Absolutely, and we can, we'll definitely make a note of that, so we don't miss it again. And I'll accept full responsibility and apologize for that. But we'll make sure that we're, we're, each time we have any type of a 5:05 public hearing, we'll make sure it's advertised separately on the website.
Okay. Next speaker, Anna Reagan.
Hello, Anna Reagan, 821 First Avenue, Placa. I just have my phone up here because I want to pull up two campaign advertisements for Mr. Commissioner Terry Turner and Commissioner Larry Harvey. I hear a lot of excuses regarding.
Can you speak up a little bit?
I hear a lot of excuses regarding the budget and why we're here today. And I'd like to point out, Terry Turner, your ad in July 2020 said you would be working every day to improve our infrastructure, grow our economy, keep citizens safe, and make government more efficient and effective, with check marks next to infrastructure and economic development. So I'm not really understanding where the blaming is coming from. I, as Mr. Adams Act said, he has brought up a plan to try to lower our millage in the past, but you're, you're, either we have some memory loss, or you are choosing not to go by your campaign promises regardless. This is what you ran on. And this is not economic development, and this is not building an infrastructure. This is purely reactive budgeting. I would like to look next at Larry Harvey, October 2015. These are both Facebook. You both posted them yourselves. Don't be fooled, local politics, it doesn't matter if you're a D or an R or whatever. I hear that. It doesn't trust me. I'm not even sure what that means, but we'll skip back to here. He said, "An elected official leaned over to me and said, 'We don't have enough money now. We have to raise taxes.' My response: 'Cut government and reduce taxes and allow businesses to grow, hire, and invest.' It seemed foreign to that person, or maybe I encouraged them to think for a moment, 'Don't drink the Kool-Aid.'" I assume that you will also be budget, like, oh, sorry, voting for this budget, but this goes completely against your campaign promises. And, I mean, you've been completely silent.
Term Kool-Aid in the campaign ad?
No, it's not an ad. It's on your campaign page.
I did not do that.
I mean, I, I can, it's on your Facebook page. I didn't say it was a campaign ad. I said Terry Turner's was a campaign ad.
Ma'am, if you were to make your statement, I don't want to get in a debate or discussion.
I'm just saying, I'm happy to show it to you, because I don't want to play.
You can show it to him.
A lot of things were played on Facebook last, during the primary.
Okay. Regardless, did you not make campaign promises? And this budget, I think, goes against both of your campaign promises as fiscal conservatives.
We did.
All right. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Marshall? Rossen?
First off, what a beautiful week it's been. Aren't we blessed to live in the great state of Florida? What a blessing. We've got some beautiful country here. Lot to defend. Anyways, it is never a good time to raise taxes.
Can you state, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Marshall Clayton Rawson, 10528 US Highway 301, Hampton, Florida. I'm the chairman of the Greater Melrose Republican I'm the chairman of the Greater Melrose Republican Liberty Caucus, and while it is never a good time to raise taxes on the good, hard-working people of Florida and the people of Putnam County, it is particularly in the year that's been plagued by high gas prices and inflation due to the hostility of this U.S. administration, it is certainly not a good time to raise taxes, and raising the budget with an increase in our assessed value is certainly a tax. So, so, can you mind if I just take this? Sorry. Can't you hear me? Okay.
They're recording the meeting.
I got you. Yes, I apologize. So there's a conflated view of needs versus luxuries, you know? Everyday people, we have this conflated conception of what we need versus what our luxuries is, luxuries are, and after a while, we start to believe that the luxuries that we have are necessities, and government is not immune from this problem. You know, to make an example, you know, if I, if I lived outside of my means, outside of my budget, or if I just decided that, hey, I want some more money, and so I went to Mr. Alfred and I said, hey, I need some more money, and if you don't give me any money, you know, I'm going to put a lien on your home and eventually take your home. Well, you know, we would call that theft, and it is time that government, you know, views, views it the same way and lives under the same concept. Our county commissions need to be good stewards with less, and the Republican Liberty Caucus opposes this tax increase. On a second note, it is disingenuous to claim that we support our veterans when we fail to claim, fail to defend the legacy, the memory of those veterans who defended our communities the most. We should be proud to have this monument in front of our courthouse here in Putnam County. We should be honored to have men who defended our communities, who are commemorated in that monument, and we should look for men in the future who will defend our communities in the same gallant way that these men depicted in our monument defended these communities in our great state of Florida. For these reasons, we would like to see a monument protection ordinance defending our monuments, and particularly all of our monuments, but the one hotspot, our Confederate monument at our courthouse. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Adams Act?
I agree with everything you said as far as the monuments go, but I'm going to take this a different path because it's something I meant to say while I was talking about the budget that I forgot. The people are going to be most hurt by any tax increase, whether it's ad valorem tax, whether it's income tax, which, thank God, we don't have in Florida, but federal income tax, ad valorem tax, which is our biggest tax in Putnam County, is those people that are on fixed income, which is exactly those disabled veterans. The veterans actually served out a full term. You know, I only served four years, so I don't get a retirement or anything, but those people that committed their life and spent 20 to 30 years in the service, and now they're on a fixed income and they came out. Those people that are on Social Security, the older people that moved or retired here, and they basically have a limited income, then they compound it. If they're homesteaded, they're pretty safe because they're capped. But if you have someone that's in that situation that's renting, the rental properties are the ones that are going to pass on the tax, and they also get a larger tax because they're not homesteaded, so they're not capped like the same way that a homestead property is. So if their assessment goes up 20%, the tax goes up. You know, my house is homesteaded, it only goes up 4% or wherever the cap is, 3%. So it's even better, but, so they're not capped, so they're making up the difference to get that there with the, keeping the millage the same. So we're hurting our most vulnerable people in our community by not lowering the millage every time we do it, because there is no landlord that, out of the gracious of his heart, goes, "My family doesn't need this money, let's give it to yours." There are a few maybe that do it because they're good people or in specific instances where they have someone that's renting from that and needs a hand up for a little bit. They don't do it long-term, they have to recoup their money at some point. So I just think we're doing a disservice to those people, and that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Okay.
Two of our commissioners who ran for county commission did sign our monument protection pledge, and we would like to see those two gentlemen fulfill that pledge also when I'll sit down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other further public comment? We'll close the public comment portion. Commissioner, we have three items to approve or not approve. First one will be adopting the final levy of ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year 2022-23. So the first motion would be to pass the resolution adopting the final millage rate, and then there are three parts of that. It was the pleasure of this commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. The first motion, the fiscal year 2022-23 Putnam County-wide operating millage of 9.3099 mil, which is the same as last year's millage rate, but 10.6% higher than the rollback rate of 8.4162 mil. Item B, the fiscal year 2022-23 Putnam County non-county-wide operating millage rate for the fire tax unit, municipal servicing taxing unit of 1.1000 mil, which is the same as last year's millage rate. This rate is 10.93% higher than the rollback rate of 0.9916 mil. Item C, together with the aggregated millage is 10.2741 mil, which is 10.65% higher than the aggregated rollback rate of 9.2850 mil.
I'll second that. Does he also need to read the resolution of...
Box tile, please.
Okay, so Resolution 22-095?
And Mr. Chairman, included in my motion is Resolution 22-095, resolution of the Putnam County Board of County, Putnam County Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, adopting the final levy of ad valorem taxes for the Putnam County for fiscal year 2022-23.
And I include that in my second.
So we got a proper motion and a proper second. Roll call vote? You going to do it?
Actually.
Just do by district? Yes. No?
Yes.
Yes.
No? Okay, motion passed three to two. Mr. Adams Act and Commissioner Rawson dissenting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the second motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 budget, all funds, $243,594,886.
You misstated the amount. You said 243. It's 234, isn't it?
234, 594, 866.
4594, 886.
Correct. And Resolution Number 22096, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year 222023.
Second.
Okay. Okay, we got a proper motion and a proper second. Roll call vote, Ms. Ashley? Yes. No?
Yes.
Yes.
No? Motion passes three to two with Commissioner Rawson and Commissioner Adams Act dissenting. The last item business would be to pass the capital improvement, five-year capital improvement plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the five-year capital improvement plan is included in the package.
Second.
We got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner and a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Yeah, my light is lit.
That's why I'm sorry.
That's all right. I like the majority of what's done in this. I really appreciate staff's efforts on coming up with the capital improvement plans. I think this is some of the best work that I see in the time that I've been here, is planning for capital improvement when we get to the point that we're doing it. I have to vote no because I can't vote for anything that includes expanding our sewer system in East Placa, just for consistency's sake. So I'll be voting no, and I'm not going to rehash the 20 reasons that I have for voting no there.
Okay. Got a proper motion and a proper second. Any other discussion? Ashley? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay. Motion passes four to one with Commissioner Adams Act dissenting. Okay. Any other further, further business to come before this board? In closing, I just want to...
I asked for a closing comments.
Yes, okay. Closing comments, I'll start with you, Commissioner Rawson.
So when, when can we get a monument protection ordinance discussion? Any chance of doing it at our next meeting?
Some time after November.
Yeah. I mean, I... Yeah. I think it's important. You know, we've all sat up here, I think there's, I can't speak for the rest of y'all. I would imagine if I was in your position, you'd probably have some regret, but there's an opportunity here. I think Mr. Rawson said it best, you know, you, the state of Florida elected to join the Confederacy. The soldiers that fought in that battle were soldiers, and no more than we, we can, no more than people can put us down for being Floridians can anybody say that that monument doesn't represent all veterans, whether it's from the Civil War or wars after. It's, it is just a veteran's monument. So I think it's important that the county commission take a position to protect that and all monuments that celebrate not just veterans, but also other folks that we have in the community. And I think that it's a disservice to the community if we don't. You know, the, the statute that the governor signed into law does not protect that. Only we can. So I think it's something that should be discussed. You know, you guys have been waiting me out for four years, I understand that, but, you know, it's, your constituents have asked for it. I think it's, I think it's time for that.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just really want to remind everybody to stay safe. You got a major storm actually changed the little path today going, going across Florida, coming up between 95 and the St. John's River. If it continues the path, we're going to get inundated with rain, and if, like I said earlier today, if you flooded before, you're going to flood this time. If your roads washed out, you're going to, your roads are going to wash out. So please be safe and take your personal responsibility. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams Act?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. I mean, our persons are what's the most important asset, so please, everyone, please take every precaution you can with your, your life and your safety. Any property or something that may be put in jeopardy due to flooding or wind or anything else like that is secondary to your lives and your children's lives, and just make sure you put that forward when you're thinking during this weather event, which hopefully the further east it goes, the less impactful it is to us. So pray for everyone else that's in the path. You know, we don't want anyone to be affected by it, but we know some people are going to be affected because it's, it's already, Cuba's already been affected. So just pray for everyone that's in the path. And, you know, I appreciate the discussions during this budget meeting. I'm always going to vote the way I vote and always explain why I do, and I think you guys do a pretty good job of explaining why you do as well, and that's what government's about. So having these discussions is important, and then the bottom line is up to the people to decide. I do want to thank staff for the work that they put into it. Again, I, at some point, people took it that I was being critical of staff. That was never my purpose. I was being critical of my fellow commissioners. I still love them, but I don't agree with them on this one topic. But everyone remember, as much as we may argue here about a subject, the sunshine law does not allow us to discuss it outside of this dais. So this is our only opportunity for the five of us to sit down and talk about the budget, talk about the process, talk about what's in the paper, or anything like that that we choose to speak of. And when we have a disagreement, our first knowledge of that disagreement is right here sitting here. Some of it's historic, right? Obviously, we know that I'm never going to vote for a tax increase because I've said it 50 times, but the rest of it, the reasons why and that, that's up for debate. And I just want to be clear that I appreciate everyone that I serve with and all the staff here in the county, and I'm really praying that everyone is safe, associated with staff and citizens, and thank you, everybody, for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams Act. Mr. Turner?
I just want to say that I'm, I totally agree with the be safe, try to be very safe. I'm going to try not to make any fresh comments for the new, that the newspaper's going to quote me on tomorrow about a 49 model motorhome or a mobile home. So anyhow, just, just be safe. You know, if you feel, if you feel unsafe, go to a, go to one of the shelters. If you, if you feel like you, 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 you're just not comfortable, go to a shelter. That's all I can say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris Turner. I'd like to first thank staff, Administrator Suggs, Julann, and all the staff, all the executive directors and department heads on putting the budget together. Each one of these for the last six years has been tough, and it brings challenges. Things cost more, employees want to get paid more, and it's, they're, they're all tough, each one of them. So I just want to thank you for all your efforts. I want to thank everybody for their comment today, and we do have a storm coming. Our emergency services, J.R. Grimes has done a fantastic job with his staff to prepare Putnam County for the worst, and hopefully we'll have the best results, but they, they've been working around the clock for the last three days, and we'll continue to do that until this storm is over, and then we'll start the evaluation and cleanup process. So that's all I have. Hope everybody's safe. This meeting's adjourned.